We'll call, please.
Councilmembers Hannah, Grunmeyer, Bash, Mayor Protem Hoffman, Mayor Newton.
Here.
All present.
Thank you Cheryl. We will now adjourn to closed session. Well, good evening everyone. I'd like to reconvene the city council meeting. Will the city attorney please give us a report on closed session?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There was no reportable action.
Thank you. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Hannah and then remain standing for the invocation by Pastor Michelle Ehrenberg. Thank you.
(Pleading) Pledge of Allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, hello there. Thank you for inviting me tonight. What an honor and a blessing it is. I have been praying for you individually by name, and I have been praying for you as well, and for this evening. And so would you join me now as we invoke the presence of the Lord? Gracious God, our rock, our deliverer, loving God, our fortress, our protector and provider, thank you. Thank you, Lord, that we can look to you for wisdom, for discernment, for patience and strength, and you are never far. You will never leave us nor forsake us. Lord, I thank you that we live in a country where we are free to believe, free to worship, and free to speak. Thank you, Lord, for those who have sacrificed and fought for these freedoms. I thank you for a city that still dares to proclaim the words in God we trust. What an honor and a privilege it is to be a part of something so wonderful. Lord, we invite you tonight to lead and guide, to temper and try, to cause words that are said and thoughts implied to be spoken with graciousness and received with grace for the good of this city, this community, these people, and to bring you honor. Would you be with Mayor Newton, with each council member, with city staff, and with Norco citizens gathered here? Thank you for the strength and wisdom gathered in this room tonight. Thank you that this chamber is filled with caring individuals, and I thank you for integrity and good insight. May this be, this meeting be a time that draws people and ideas together, that builds community, and continues to make this city a great place to live in, to play in, and to work in. And now to him who is able to do immeasurably more than all we can ask or imagine according to his power that is at work within us, to him be the glory. God bless the United States of America, and God bless Horsedown, USA. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Michelle. We'll now have a introduction by Lieutenant. Good evening.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. Recently, there has been a change of supervisors at the Norco Sheriff's Office, so tonight I'd like to introduce these two new sergeants to City Council and to our residents. Gents, can you come on up? Sergeant Bill Davis has over 28 years with the Sheriff's Department. He's worked numerous patrol assignments, which included the Hoopa Valley Station, Paris and Moreno Valley Stations. He was a department K-9 handler for over 10 years and was most recently assigned to the Hoopa Valley Station Traffic Division responsible for traffic reconstruction. Our second sergeant, Sergeant Josh Parker, is an 18-year veteran of the Sheriff's Department. He's been assigned to patrol our Professional Standards Bureau and our Special Investigations Bureau, where he was a member of the Marijuana Eradication Team. Most recently, he was assigned to our Hoopa Valley Station Watch Three Patrol. Both sergeants were selected to work the Norco assignment based upon their strong work ethic, skill set, and willingness to serve. I look forward to working with them as part of our Norco Sheriff's Office team, a team that works hard to serve the residents of the City of Norco with continued pride and professionalism. Welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Hello. Good evening, City Council and City Manager. I am excited to be in the City of Norco, and I look forward to serving the residents of Norco. Like Lieutenant said, I have over 28 years of law enforcement experience I'm bringing to the table, and my specialty is traffic enforcement, so don't be surprised if you see me roaming around your cities giving out citations. So, thank you.
Nobody speeds in our town. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm also happy to be here. I know I was a longtime detective, so I enjoy doing more complex investigations, so, you know, hopefully I can guide our deputies in doing those type of things. So, just happy to be here and happy to serve Norco.
Thank you so much. One thing you're going to find out is you have our support.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Well, we have some recognitions, some business appreciation, so what I'd like to do is ask council to join me down at the podium, and Mr. Z from the school district, and we're Young lady, would you join us up here? Right here.
Come on, you're not shy.
I think I am a little bit right now.
What?
You're a hero. You're a rock star. So, on behalf...
So nice.
Thank you. On the behalf of the City of Norco, the City Council, and the residents of Norco, to you for developing the highly successful Hundred Mile Club, a program that has been adopted by nearly 1,000 schools across all 50 states, in addition to four countries, and is known for providing students with life lessons in goal-setting, determination, and team spirit, as well as the opportunity to lead an active lifestyle. You're not done. Okay. Mr. Z?
Okay. Very good. Hi. Hi, sweetie. How are you? I'm John Zikafus from the Corona Norco School Board, and in appreciation also from the district, and as you all know, we have many schools here in Norco. And I'm just going to throw out a couple numbers here. We have 26, we have actually 50 schools in the district. 26, 27, 28 of them participate. The goal of the Hundred Mile Club is for a student to achieve 100 miles in the course of a school year. Well, that's, most of us don't do that, if you think about it, so it's a pretty big accomplishment. And we have 10,239 students, this is last school year, that achieved 25 miles, and almost 50 or more. And she's always over the "or more." Or more. And this is "or more" as well. And half of those achieved, 5,234 achieved at least 100 miles or more, and you'd be amazed at how many of them go to 200, 250 miles. So, it really is an incredible thing that Kara has started, and she started this as a school teacher.
Yes.
And she, second grade, second or third grade? I forget. Fourth, oh, fifth, I forgot.
Fourth, sixth, and sixth.
Had some active students, and so she decided, you know, I got to get them out moving, and realized, you know what? Hey, when they got back to the classroom, they were better equipped to learn, which isn't what we all want as community members and council members. We want our kids in there learning in the classroom. And she figured out that this works and has developed it, and that was in 94, too. I'll get some of these numbers right someday. So, yeah. It's a long time ago, yeah. But anyway, she's just amazing and has done a ton, and I will tell you, she's actually saved the school district money because the state requires a certain number achieved by every student of activity, physical activity. And because of the Hundred Mile Club, and obviously we have a pretty high percentage here, we're just off the charts. So, we don't even have to worry about that, but there are a lot of, unfortunately, districts who are having to pay a lot of money, so we are grateful to you.
Yay, 100 miles.
That's right, yeah. So, thank you, my dear. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Not yet.
So, Kevin, would you like to say a few words, and then any of the other council members, please?
They gave me something to read.
This is exciting.
Yeah, it's exciting. So, they wanted me to read this, and then I have just a couple words to say about this lady who's been dogging me for years. "The Hundred Mile Club challenges students to walk, jog, or run 100 miles at school in a single school year. It teaches students to get moving every day, set goals, and create team spirit." Founded by Kara Lubin, take a bow, during the 1992-93 school year at Washington Elementary. The Hundred Mile Club has since been adopted by schools across the country, in how many countries?
Uh, 10.
10. See, you're not getting anything right today.
No, you're doing...
"Whereby students..." See, she's good. "...are embracing exercise in the pursuit of positive goals." Where my biggest contact with Kara is Monday nights.
Oh, God.
And I will get calls from like Tanzania saying, "The lights aren't on."
I called in from Maine.
Yeah, I mean, wherever.
Text messages, the lights aren't on.
So, I go up, but what's really cool about the Hundred Mile Club is it's not just kids doing it. It's mom, dad, brothers, grandma, grandpa, and there's this little trek we go up to Pumpkin Rock, and so I get to tell the history of Pumpkin Rock like 50 times a year, but it's a lot of fun, and it's really amazing. Whole families turn out. So, congratulations, you deserve this, and this is a Norco High graduate, which is the key to her success.
Yeah.
Right? Right? Okay, good.
Very true.
Congratulations.
Thank you. 1986.
No, actually, 2005.
1915.
I'm 1999. Ted is 1985. Robin graduated last year.
Yay.
Ted?
Well, you know what? The one thing, and I don't go up for walking, but I see the kids on Monday, you know, because I'm up at the park all the time, but what you have done is not only see them coming up on Monday nights, but we see them up there all the time, taking the trek up to Pumpkin Rock. Now continually, these kids are always doing it, so thank you very much.
You know.
Appreciate getting in. As a person that has walked, and I walk a lot, I'm glad the kids are out there, at least exercising. So, thank you for the good job you're doing.
Thank you.
Hello. I just want to say thank you. I remember when you started this just a few years ago over here at the building up on the hill up there. You had a...
Yeah.
...made up of it up there. But thank you and congratulations.
Thank you.
Robin?
So, as a parent of children that have participated in Hundred Mile Club, I would also like to say thank you. Several trips to Pumpkin Rock, and then going to events after school so they could get extra sticks to get closer to the Hundred Miles is very important. And now to a high school cross-country runner, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Oh, yay.
The microphone is yours.
Well, Mayor Newton and City Council Members, and Mr. Z, and everyone here, I just want to say thank you so much for allowing me to come here today, and I want to thank, thank Ms. Norva for, she's such a champion, so great. Currently, the Hundred Mile Club is actually serving 4,100 schools in all 50 states and 10 countries, and our office is right up on Beacon Hill. The start of the Hundred Mile Club came out of Norco, and I'm going to tell you why. There's a very romantic story out there, which is sort of true, about how I had hyperactive kids, and I wanted to calm them down, and it was very great, and, you know, whatever. At the time, I was a 22-year-old second-year teacher, and I grew up in Norco. I've been here since I was 11. I've been riding horses since I was eight. What I know is that kids and horses are exactly alike. They know when you love them, they know when you don't, they know when you care, they can smell fear, but if you give them love and structure, they'll do anything for you. I also know that if you lunge a horse a little bit before you try to teach them something new, it's a little easier. So, that paired with my love of Olympics and the idea to earn an Olympic gold medal, the idea came to me that I am going to lunge the children. Truth. It was before any research on the brain and the body, it was before any research had come out about how kids need to exercise in the mornings before school. It came out of Norco. So, if I didn't grow up here, this would never have happened. And for me to grow up in a town like this, that has welcomed us into this city and allowing our kids to run on Monday nights and earn miles, kids come from all over Southern California to run here on Monday nights. And thank you, I mean, where, in what other town can you call up a city council member and go, "You got to get up there and turn the lights on, you got 200 families up there." And I'm in Maine, right? And he does. So, thank you to this incredible city council for supporting these kids and their families and their goals. So, my gratitude is immense. If you ever want to experience pure joy, come run with these kids. It is amazing. So, thank you for allowing the Hundred Mile Club to be here, for allowing me to do what I love in my hometown. It is a very special place, and I am forever grateful to be here. So, thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. One more, two more. All right. Are we taking pictures?
You have to get in front of the...
Oh.
We all do. Go ahead.
So much. Thank you.
I'll just stay down here. So, more of my style is after I run 100 miles with Kara, I'd like Scott DeRosa to come up here for a business appreciation, Honore Cowgirl Cafe.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Scott DeRosa. I'm the Vice Chair for the EDAC Council here at City of Norco, and a joint venture that the council has been working on over the last year along with EDAC is putting the spotlight on different businesses that have a great contribution to our community with special events, contributing to the economics, et cetera. So, this month and tonight, we're here to go ahead and celebrate Cowgirl Cafe. They've been a wonderful landmark here, been here forever and a day, and besides having great food and great service and so forth, we're super excited to go ahead and have them be appreciated this month as our Business Appreciation Award recipient. So, if Karen and Gary Hendrickson could come up, please? Good evening. I'm over here. At least behind the podium for a moment, then we'll throw you out front. We'd like to present you with this award, and I'll go ahead and read what it says. "The City of Norco hereby honors Cowgirl Cafe for serving Norconians and their nonprofit organizations promoting a classic horsetown USA ambiance, and for contributing to the local economy and community events. Thank you so much. We truly appreciate having you here."
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you.
If you'd like to say something, congratulations.
I'm going to let Gary.
A few words.
We appreciate the town of Norco and the community members. You support us. We try and support different activities in the city, and that's what we feel it's about. We try and do our shopping local and everything, so just thank you very much for supporting us.
Thank you.
Bye now.
Thank you.
Okay, a couple more presentations. Next, this is going to be the Norco Horse Afair event. Fran and Lisa, are you going to speak, or just Fran? Good evening.
Okay.
You can, yes, please. Sorry.
I don't want to break it right off the bat here. Good evening, Mayor and Council Members. Thank you for having me. I appreciate it. My name is Fran Clovstad. I'm the owner of Thrifty Horse, which is located over on Sixth Street. It's a little late in the evening, and I can't see real well, and I wrote everything down because my brain is so full of stuff that I can't remember everything, so please forgive me. Anyway, we moved the store to Norco nine years ago, just from down the street in Corona, and it's done nothing but blossomed, and we're very thankful for that. Tonight, I'd like to present to you the Norco Horse Affair, where horsemen meet. My passion, my personal passion, started with horses 50 years ago. Like many little girls, my first horse was a brier. I was granted the ultimate gift of a horse at the age of eight, and horses have since then shaped my life's passions. My husband asked me for my hand in marriage. I own three horses, and let him know we were a package deal. For the last, well, actually, for over 35 years, our lives have been shaped by our equine partners. We've been competitors, horsemanship school instructors, rough stock owners, boarding stable owner. We own the Thrifty Horse Consignment Shop, and now we're promoters of the Norco Horse Affair. My journey has been a natural evolution of my passion and my desire to share knowledge and to educate. I hope you join me and my team as we will be celebrating everything equine. I draw from a lifetime of experience to bring you an equine exhibition that I know you'll be talking about for years. We will be featuring the Norco Animal Shelter Adoption, BLM Horse Adoption. We're going to have a Kitty Corral, which will be a place that the kids can come and unwind and learn about horses. We will have a book nook with many local authors. Mary Rose Anderson, a young trainer here in town, is putting on an All-American Horse Challenge, which is a three-day competition for professionals, amateurs, and youth. There will be a Norcos Ladies Night Rodeo, which I believe she raises funds for cancer research. The Golden West Championship Model Horse Show will be taking place during our Norco Horse Affair, which I'm personally excited about. If you've never been to one, it's kind of a kick. You have to experience it. We will have a Breed Pavilion with a daily parade of breeds, and that's being sponsored by the horse trader, which I'm excited that they're involved. We will have live entertainment from music groups such as recording artist Christopher Thomas, the Texas House Party Band, the Darden Sisters, the Sugar Daddy's Barber Shop Quartet, and our local band, The Raining Horseshoes. Sunday morning at 8:30, we will be having Cowboy Church with Pastor Phil Wozniak, who's the new pastor over at the Grace Church, and we're excited to have him. He's closing down his entire church that day and bringing everybody up to the fair, and that's where he's holding church. We have shopping, we have food, we have beer through the Norco Lions Club. We have contacted all the horse-related businesses on Sixth Street and have full support from each of them. Additionally, we have asked them to bring attention to their stores with balloons, banners, sale racks, whatever it takes to make Sixth Street festive. Each of the two arenas will be busy all day with clinics and presentations and demonstrations. We've invited local trainers such as Pippa Eris, Suzie Peacock, Jerry Lundey, Cheryl Lindy, Jolene King. We have Matt Sheridan, Stacy Turner, Back Country Horseman, Jeannie DeBruce. The idea is to use the local trainers, so when you go and you see Jeannie DeBruce show this miniature horse and you want to get involved, you can find somebody right here in town to learn how to work with miniature horses. The finale will be on Sunday. It's called Fiesta Sunday. Our own 21-year-old Aurora Del Vilar, who works with me at the store, has put together a tremendous schedule to teach us about the Latino traditions. We will see side saddle ladies, we'll have the Rose Parade famous Broken Horn ropers, we will have something called the Pass of Death, but I promise it's not as bad as it sounds. And we have a local vocal artist, Felipe Orozco Jr., and there's much, much more that she's got planned. Other groups that we're including from the area is our Troop 33 Boy Scouts, our Norco FFA and alumni, the ROTC, Lions Club Saddle Sore Riders, Mr. Hoffman's going to help us out a little bit, Norco Horsemen Association, the Norco Mounted Posse, the Ramsey Ranch Pony Club, we've got pony rides coming from Tom's Farms, and Disney's involved also this time. My hope is that through the Norco Horse Affair, we will educate and intrigue you to further your relationships with your horses. We wholeheartedly invite you to join us this first weekend in October, October 6th, 7th, and 8th. If you'd like more information, we have a beautiful website that Lisa has helped us create, full of information. You can contact me personally at the store or on my cellphone, which I will happily give you. Any questions?
Any questions?
All right. This is our first ever, so we really, really hope you all will attend. We'd love to have you up there. It's really coming together. It's scary coming together, so now as we need its people to show up.
You're going to do good. Thank you, Fran. And I'd also like to, I'd also like to mention staff, Patty, and all the work that you're putting into this to make it successful also.
Absolutely.
We all know how hard you work. Thank you. Okay, we're now going to have a presentation by the Western Riverside Council of Governments, my friend Rick Bishop and Chris Gray. Good evening, Rick.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council, and staff, and members of the audience. I'm Rick Bishop. I'm the Executive Director of the Western Riverside Council. I don't know if we can continue the role of having applause after every presentation or not, but we'll do our best. We'll leave that to you.
Pull back.
I'm sure you, I'm sure you might. Anyways, I want to thank you all for your participation in WRCOG first and foremost. We are a better agency because of Norco and all of our participating agencies, and I think you all know that we strive very hard in the programs that we offer to help our local jurisdictions in the region achieve cost efficiencies in how they conduct business. And we're better because we have a committee structure that is comprised of city and county staff. So, our goal is that every recommendation that we take to our executive committee, and we thank Mayor Protem for being your designate to our executive committee, but our goal has always been that every recommendation that gets there has been vetted by your staff, by your public works directors, your planning directors, your city manager, your finance director, so on and so forth, and we think that that contributes to our success. I'm here today to talk about something that may be new to some of you, may not be. It's something called Community Choice Aggregation. It is, I'm going to see if this can go forward. Thank you. So, I'll just kind of provide, I'm going to provide a very high-level overview, and then you'll see that we have a ways to go in talking more about this as we move along. But Community Choice Aggregation is something that has been enabled by state law in California, specifically...
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council and staff and members of the audience. I'm Rick Bishop. I'm the Executive Director of the Western Riverside Council. I don't know if we can continue the role of having applause after every presentation or not, but we'll do our best. We'll leave that to you.
Pull back.
I'm sure you might. Anyways, I want to thank you all for your participation in WRCOG first and foremost. We are a better agency because of Norco and all of our participating agencies. And I think you all know that we strive very hard in the programs that we offer to help our local jurisdictions in the region achieve cost efficiencies in how they conduct business. And we're better because we have a committee structure that is comprised of city and county staff. So our goal is that every recommendation that we take to our executive committee, and we thank Mayor Protem for being your designate to our executive committee, but our goal has always been that every recommendation that gets there has been vetted by your staff, by your public works directors, your planning directors, your city manager, your finance director, so on and so forth. And we think that that contributes to our success. I'm here today to talk about something that may be new to some of you, may not be. It's something called community choice aggregation. It is, I'm going to see if this to go forward. So I'll just kind of provide, I'm going to provide a very high-level overview, and then you'll see that we have ways to go in talking more about this as we move along. But community choice aggregation is something that has been enabled by state law in California, specifically a bill AB 117, which allows local governments to provide electricity to customers as an alternative to the current energy provider in Southern California. That's Southern California, Edison. And before I go further, I just want to make mention of the fact that we, WRCOG, have a fantastic partnership with Southern California Edison. And I'm not just saying that because they have a representative here in the audience. We have a long history of working well with them to find ways to achieve economies of scale. And I'm very fortunate to actually serve on Edison's Government Advisory Panel. And we talk about this issue from time to time. And one thing that I think is important for Edison is they've made a statement that struck, stuck with me last week, and that is that they understand their customers are your constituents. And they want to work very closely with us to make sure that if and as CCA moves forward, that we have collectively the customers, the consumers' best interests in mind. But what a CCA basically is, is right now, Southern California Edison, which is your utility, they go out and they purchase energy. They also then transmit that energy through their lines to the customer and then provide the billing to the customer. What a CCA does is it basically replaces that first box. The first box is the energy purchase. So instead of Edison purchasing the energy, a local energy authority that is comprised and composed of locally elected officials makes those energy purchases. And this is something that is not new in California, but is something that is also being pursued by many jurisdictions and subregions. So why are jurisdictions participating in CCAs? Why are others interested in it? It's really for a number of reasons, including but not limited to what you see on the screen. The basic idea is that CCA provides customers with choices, which is something that customers right now do not have. It also provides for lower rates and even a greener mix of energy and the energy supplied to local customers, if that's something they desire, and if also desired by the local board that determines the mix of energy that is being provided. Most importantly, we think it creates local control over programs. And so by having a local board, it can be more flexible and nimble to issues as they arise, specifically in rate setting. So for example, if a local governing board of a CCA determines that they want to augment or increase reductions in rates for local businesses or a type of business or for low-income residents, it can do so very, very quickly. We think that that's a major advantage. And then lastly, something like this can create favorable economic development opportunities, certainly by offering energy at reduced rates. And overall, if you're able to save local customers, consumers, businesses, and residents a few bucks over the course of time, that translates to millions of dollars of savings that can be plunged into the region otherwise. There are a number of jurisdictions throughout the state that have implemented CCAs and are interested in pursuing the development of CCAs. This map just provides a snapshot of that. And you can see most of the urban counties in California are doing this. Eight CCAs are actually operational in California. There are six that are scheduled to launch in 2017 and 2018, notably in LA County is on the way. And then you can see there are 13, including Western Riverside County. And then our partner, Council of Governments in the east, the Coachella Valley Association of Governments, are in the stages of exploration of CCA. So the bottom line that we get asked is, do CCAs save money? The answer from experience is, yes, that they do. The most mature operating CCAs in the state, both up in Marin and Sonoma County, have reported that their residents have saved $6 million in utility costs in 2014 alone. City of San Rafael, smaller, has reported also savings in their first year. The Sonoma County Power was actually net positive in 60 days. And after 18 months, they had actually built up a reserve of $36 million, which then they, their board, can determine what to do in regards to business enhancement and energy savings to them. For WRCOG, we have performed a feasibility study. I'll get, I'll talk about that a little bit more. And our feasibility study, which uses very conservative estimates, indicates that if all of our subregions, member jurisdictions, all 18, were to join in, in a Western Riverside County CCA, the savings could be up to approximately $30 million a year to the consumer. So just imagine what $30 million can do, being plunged back into the economy by local residents. I mentioned the feasibility study about a year or so ago. As we became interested in CCA and wanted to perform a feasibility study, we then partnered with the Coachella Valley Association of Governments and also the San Bernardino Council of Governments, formerly known as the San Bernardino Association of Governments, to perform a feasibility study that looked at potential CCA at a number of geographies. One massive CCA that would encompass both counties combined, as well as smaller CCAs that would be at the county level, and then even smaller CCAs that would just be pertaining to the alignment, the geographic alignment that you see there. One in San Bernardino, one in Western Riverside County, one in Seavag. The study examined what you might think. It was very thorough. Again, I mentioned it was very conservative in the estimates and the assumptions that it makes. And it took a look at the profiles of the region, the number of accounts, load analysis, what the savings would be. It dipped into talking about governance structures, operational structures, and staff support, and so on and so forth. So what did it find? The bottom line was taking a look at savings for both counties combined. It found that if a CCA and the two counties combined were to offer residents and businesses a 33% renewable mix, and that is compared to the current renewable mix that is offered by Edison of about 28%. The reason we use the 33% is because state law requires California to be able to meet that standard by the year 2020. And so we're just sort of jumping ahead of that, saying, well, let's just jump right into that and provide it now. We found that there would be about a 4.9% savings on the utility bill for consumers. So basically, the idea there is that a consumer that's paying $100 a month, if they could switch over to a CCA, would be paying $95 a month or so. At smaller levels of geography, so a CCA that is just pertaining to Seavag or just pertaining to WRCOG and just pertaining to the San Bernardino COG, you see the savings are a little bit less, and it doesn't really have as much to do with the energy purchase as it does to do with the governance structure. So obviously, if you have a larger, a larger-sized CCA, you're reducing the need for executive directors and administrative staff. You can kind of put them all into one bucket. We also took a look at what the savings would be under a proposed CCA at a 50% energy mix, renewable mix, excuse me. That's a requirement from state law that California achieved by 2030. So again, trying to get ahead of the curve and seeing what we can do. And then we found in talking with Marin and Sonoma Counties and some of the northern counties, that a lot of their residents and businesses actually prefer 100% mix, and they're willing to pay for it. And so they offer it. And so we decided to do an analysis of that as well. So you can see that using very conservative numbers with regards to participation rates and other things, we thought that this feasibility study provided us with enough information to go to our executive committee and continue to move forward. I want to talk specifically about how it'll work, again, trying to stay at a real high level. And the focus here is on the left-hand side there, that is in the red box. That's the source in the CCA, and this would be the local governments banding together through a joint powers authority to purchase the energy. So the way a CCA works is a little bit peculiar. Pursuant to state law, a CCA is what we call an opt-out program. So for example, if the city of Norco or Norco and a number of cities were to band together and say, we're going to form a local energy authority to be the purchaser of energy, it goes through the paces to do that. And then once that is accomplished, all of the customer base within those jurisdictions, they automatically become part of the CCA unless they make a decision to opt out and stay with the local utility. That's of interest, but there's also stipulations and requirements that the CCA or the potential CCA notify consumers at least two times prior to CCA launch, saying, this is what's going on. Here's the projected energy savings. Gives you an opportunity. If you want to opt out, you can. And then that obviously can occur. And then, of course, consumers can opt out at any time thereafter. I mentioned that because it's important. We found that in talking with Sonoma and Marin Counties too, which I think are the most mature CCAs in the state, their opt-out rates are very, very low. They've been, what we've heard is around 5% to 10%. Our study assumed 25% opt-out rate. So again, we're being very conservative with how this is going to work. The other way it's going to work really is that the only difference that the consumer is going to see is on their utility bill. And so we provided a couple examples from CCAs that are up and running. This one is for the city of Lancaster, which has its own CCA. And basically, the only thing, the only net change the consumer is going to see is the same energy provided to them. They're going to be getting the same distribution lines or being used to transmit that energy. And the only thing that's going to be different is that in their bill, you can see in the bottom there, they're going to see their charges broken down. The first charge would be, in this case, the $79. Those are the distribution costs for the utility. And then the second one would be the actual cost of the energy. And so that's one way it's done. Here's another billing statement from one of the CCAs up north, which I think is a little bit cleaner. And you can see there, the middle yellow line, it actually explains it a little bit better. It says, the current PG&E electric delivery charges, and then the Sonoma Clean Power Electric Generation charges. So you can see a little bit of breakdown. But that's about the only difference that you're going to see. Edison will continue to provide the bills, and there's really no net change to the consumer except for reduced rates. So another thing about how it's going to work, that the CCAs and the local utilities, they do work together on this, because I think the goal is that for everybody is to have the consumer's interests in mind. In fact, every year, a CCA and the utility that is operating in that CCA will jointly prepare a comparison of the CCA cost for energy and the utility's cost for energy, and they mail that to each of the consumers. And so it provides the consumer with a snapshot of, you know, here are the costs for the both. And then they can make an informed decision as to whether they want to opt back into the utility or opt out of the utility into the CCA. And so we think that that's a really valuable resource for customers is being able to provide that comparison. So with that in mind, at a high level, what have we been working on over the course of the last year and a half or so? We've completed our feasibility study, which we moved ahead on. We formed an ad hoc committee of elected officials to kind of guide us. And what we found, that governance became a big issue. And our elected officials on the ad hoc committee, then subsequently endorsed by our executive committee, which is comprised of elected officials from all of our participating member agencies, they determined that probably the best way to govern this would be through a standalone agency, a separate joint powers authority, not WRCOG, but something that is separate. The reason for that is we really don't have any idea how many jurisdictions or who will ultimately join a CCA. They could be in Western Riverside County, they could be in Western Riverside County and beyond, depending. So there's really no limit to who would join a CCA, depending on the overall goals of the founding members of the CCA themselves. So the CCA would be the decision-making body. Our ad hoc committee and executive committee also liked the idea of, at least initially for WRCOG, to provide the staff support services to it. We found that that would achieve great economies of scale because we're already working on this. We have staff that is pretty intimate with the details of CCA development. And we think that doing that rather than starting a CCA from scratch and hiring new staff is a better way to go. So we've developed some draft template agreements, a draft JPA and a draft work arrangement that accomplishes that. But they're both intentionally vague because we recognize that ultimately, the decisions about how a CCA should work should be left to the governing board itself. And so the idea is that here's a template CCA JPA, and the CCA board members would decide how to fill in the details. The working relationship or management services contract would be with WRCOG, and the CCA, as it matures, could decide whether they want to continue that arrangement, or they want to drop out and then hire their own staff. It's totally up to them. We've hired a local marketing firm called The Creative Bar, located here in Western Riverside County. They have great name recognition. And so one of the most important parts of this is figure out what name, how you want to do branding, and how you want to do marketing and outreach. And so that's a critical piece of this. Also, just last week, our executive committee directed us to hire some contractors that are well-versed in CCA development, given their experience, to assist with developing the mechanics of CCA implementation. Then finally, we're starting to have these kickoff meetings with broader audiences. And I know that the Mayor Protem has heard these presentations probably more times than he cares to. Okay, more times than you care to hear. But it's our duty to then also meet with you all and bring you up to speed. And so tonight's just kind of a kickoff for that. We're doing this with all the jurisdictions. And we really would be happy and actually hope that we will be able to find opportunities to meet with you individually and staff, and quite frankly, members of the community as well, to educate on that. So just a real quick timeline. This is kind of where we are. This is our working draft timeline, subject to change based on how we go. And this is really condensed. There's a whole lot of stuff that you could fill in in between these numbers, but we're moving judiciously and very carefully as we move ahead of this. But in an optimal situation, we could possibly have a CCA, depending on founding members, in place about a year from now. And so that's something that we're aiming for. It's something we're excited about. But ultimately, it's your decision as a local council, if you have sufficient information and are interested in doing this. So, Mr. Mayor and Council, thank you for that time. There's some contacts up here. I also want to introduce Tyler Masters. He's one of our program managers who can provide some details. And then Chris Gray will be giving a presentation on Tom. So we're out in force here tonight, and we appreciate the opportunity to be here for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Council, have any general questions at this point?
No.
We will have the opportunities.
Plenty of opportunities.
To meet in the future and
Absolutely. Yeah, we look forward to
Discuss pros and cons and all of that.
Absolutely.
Great. Absolutely, Robin.
Good evening. Real quick, kind of sounds too good to be true, potentially. So what's the hook? Or what's the catch? If you had to say something or a con, or why does it sound too good to be true?
Well, that was a question we asked when we first started hearing about this. And so we paid particular attention in looking into this more and to the point of even going up and visiting existing CCAs and asking the very question. When we hired our consultant to prepare the feasibility study, we also asked the question. One of the most difficult things, to be honest with you, about CCAs is that the audiences that we speak to are mostly groups that have implemented CCAs or are looking into it. There's kind of a pro-CCA crowd. And one of the hindrances to a CCA for us has been that Southern California, Edison, and the other utilities in the state are actually precluded from state law, from commenting too much on CCA development. So while some see that as a benefit, I see it as a real hindrance, because nobody knows the energy market better than Edison, and we could probably get some real valuable information. But we keep prying and prodding and try to trick them into telling us stuff that they might not otherwise want to tell us. And again, that's part of the good relationship we have with him. You know, the downside is, you know, despite all the information we've provided and despite all the diligence we've done, there's no guarantees in anything. And so what's really important for us is to make sure that the team, when it gets assembled, stays on track and is really, really carefully monitoring the markets and being very nimble and flexible with regard to how they provide energy. And then also making sure that a governing board, whoever, you know, comprises that governing board, is aware of every move that a CCA makes and is able to be equally nimble and flexible and moving quickly.
So on that note, Rick, that the consumer could opt out, what about the jurisdiction?
Yes, the jurisdiction
Could the city decide that, yeah, we signed up, kind of opposite like how we are with the Tum fees?
Right.
Could the city then opt out?
Absolutely. And that's one of the, that's a good point, and that's one of the clarifying points that we want the ultimate board to decide on. And there's really two ways to go about doing this. So a city can opt in to a CCA, and then let's say for some reason, they decide they want to opt out. Well, now a decision has to be made as to whether or not, when the city takes an action to opt out, are they also taking all the residents and businesses in that city with them or not? So that's a decision that has to be made. Some people that we've talked to have said, well, no, when the city opts out, we'll just take all of the municipal facilities that are attached to us with us. And others like the idea of being able to have the city say, we're going to opt out and we're taking everybody with us. It's really a decision that the cities need to make. The only thing with a CCA that would best protect the city is if by chance they opt out, they would make the statement to opt out, but then stay on board until the energy contracts relatively short-term that have been purchased for them run out, and then therefore their obligation is removed. So I think in a realistic situation, a city could make a determination to opt out, but would probably have to wait for a period of time until those energy contracts are used up before the actual opt-out would occur. And that would be in the best interest of the jurisdiction.
But this will be discussions this next year?
Absolutely.
On all of these topics?
Yeah, we have a lot of educating to do, a lot of discussions to do. And there's a lot of folks that love this idea, and there's some that hate it. And so we recognize that and we want to get all sides of this.
I certainly appreciate your time, Rick. Go ahead, Ted.
Rick, you said something there that caught my, so actually, and back to your chart with the different energy sources, you know, Robin asked a question. So what's the thing? So you're actually in the commodities market, the CCAs. So they're buying on futures, correct? This is future supplies. And so they're basing, they're purchasing on future commodities. So actually, the CCA group will be in the commodities market buying energies. Is that what this is?
Yeah. What we'll be doing is you're basically hiring the equivalent of energy brokers, you know, to help make those decisions and purchase energy on the market. Yes.
So that's the gamble?
Well, it's, I guess it's a gamble, but at the same time, Edison and other utilities are also making the same gamble.
Yeah, right. Yeah. They just pass it on. So, okay, that's what caught my, okay, thank you.
You bet.
Kevin?
So, because I'm really familiar with this, to answer Robin's question, there's a concern that it creates a level of bureaucracy that I personally, I don't see, because I like local control. You're going to be meeting with Eastville, right?
We have, we have at the council level, but we'll narrow, we'll drill down to the local.
Yeah. I like the idea of regions actually connecting and holding together. But it's one of those things we have to look, we have to look at. There's a lot of misinformation out there about these things. I mean, tons. But I like the local control aspect. But I think we'll look at that. Some of my questions are the time limit. We had a lot of discussion about time limits. How to opt out? Is it a vote of the people? Is it a vote of the council? There's a bunch of questions that have to be answered. You didn't mention that Edison maintains, can you maybe just touch on that a little bit, that the lines and things?
Yes. Yeah, I thought I had, but yeah, Edison maintains all the distribution transmissions and lines. So nothing changes with regard to how the energy is delivered to the property. The only thing that changes is that front-end purchase.
I mean, from what I can see, and I'm very pleased with the RCA and I'm very pleased with WRCOG and some of the things that we're doing and the way it brings so much information to one spot, I'd really like to move forward and just really discuss this. I think it's got some incredible possibilities. It could save people a lot of money. So I'm actually pretty excited about it.
We are too. We concur.
Quick question. That being said, what is the status of the JPA documents that addresses all of this question?
Yeah, the question is, what's the status of the JPA document that addresses this? We purposely created a very vague document, only because the question came up so much, which is, "How are we going to govern? How are we going to govern?" And so the conclusion was, "It's a JPA." And so we basically took a stripped-down boilerplate version of a JPA to say, "This is it. It's going to be a separate agency. It's going to be comprised of you, of local elected officials. You'll make the decisions." The caveat being is, it was purposely left vague as a template document because we at WRCOG didn't think it was appropriate for us to tie a future board that we do not administer to rules. And so it's up to the future JPA to decide how they want to fill in the blanks and answer some of the questions along the lines of what the mayor asked.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you so much.
And Chris is going to come up next. Chris Gray, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'm Chris Gray, the Director of Transportation with the West Riverside Council of Governments. I'm here to talk to you about the TUMF Nexus Study, and I believe you have an item later in the agenda to, for a reading of the, first reading of the TUMF ordinance. The TUMF program, as you may or may not be aware, is a regional program that's been around since the early 2000s. What happened was, is there was a recognition, and there may have been a few lawsuits thrown in the mix, that there's a need to fund regional infrastructure. And funding an interchange, a bridge, many of the projects we have in this county are very difficult for a single city to do. So the county and all the cities in Western Riverside County got together, formed the TUMF program, and it's intended to be a supplemental funding source to supplement state funding, local funding, other funding sources, and its money collected on development, which goes towards infrastructure projects. So far, we've collected about $700 million in revenue. $400 million of that's gone directly into construction, which has resulted in about $1 billion of total projects. What many of our agencies do is they take the money, and it's, sometimes it's a match for a federal grant they're getting, or state and federal funding, or money they're getting from RCTC or the county. And it's also a condition to receive your Mezurei funding. WRCOG's job within the TUMF is pretty simple. We're the administrator. We don't build anything, as much as I'd love to move shovel. I don't. We leave that in the hands of the city and the counties. But you guys are really on the front lines of TUMF. You're correcting, you're calculating the fee, you're collecting the fee, you're coming to us and telling us what projects you want funded, you're actually constructing the projects, and you, as your neighbors, come together, as Mr. Bash said, in a regional setting, so you and Eastvale and Arupa Valley and Norco and Riverside, which is your zone, come together and decide how to prioritize projects. What the Nexus Study does is it sets the maximum fees allowed for a defined list of projects. That was, sorry, that was adopted back in July 10th, 2017. You may have questions on the process. We went through a multi-year process to get there. We got, actually got some letters of support from developers. We were done with the Nexus Study, and then the SP1, SP132 was passed, the Nexus Study was revised. We also had outreach meetings with jurisdictions, executive committee members, and others. So here's the TUMF schedule. There's a couple of things I want to point out. The executive committee, at the request of our city managers, instituted a $3 square foot reduction in the fee on retail uses. The current fee, or the previous fee was $10.49. That was reduced to $7.50. It's intended to be an incentive to retail development. We've also agreed to do a, the executive committee directed that there be a two-year phase-in on any increase in single-family, and the rest of the fees are implemented. They're very modest changes. The multifamily actually goes down a couple of percentage points. But the primary focus of our executive committee was, they wanted to phase in the residential fee and reduce the retail fee. So what we're asking you is to adopt the TUMF ordinance. The TUMF is the implementation mechanism, and so that's why we have an agenda item later on. And as part of the process to move us forward, we're going to be meeting with each of our jurisdictions, including your staff, to talk about the status of your projects. And so what I want to talk about specifically is, there's a variety of projects that you have funded, that are eligible for funding in the TUMF network. The most important one, we think in the near term, is the Hamner Avenue Road. The city has received a grant to do the Hamner Avenue Bridge, and then you subsequently received some additional funding from the state. Prior to that, we had dedicated some money in the TUMF program, about $6 million for the bridge. And staff's recommendation is to take that money and put it into the Hamner Avenue roadway project, because if you're going to build a nice new bridge, you should have a nice new road to go along with the, with the bridge. And so we're going to be meeting with our cities later this year to finalize that recommendation. And so with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. And we just want to appreciate all the work from your staff, Chad, Andy, and others at your city who work with us on a regular basis. And we're happy to have the City of Norco in the TUMF program and look forward to building some nice new roads for you.
Mayor, excuse me, I have a member of the public that would like to ask a question on this presentation.
Okay. Does council have any questions for Chris?
Happy to answer any question.
You got off easy momentarily.
Yes.
Standby, and then we'll entertain one question from the audience. Cheryl?
Lou Palza.
Good evening, Lou.
And lady, did we have a program like this years ago where we purchased different utilities from other than the main suppliers?
I can't, I can't recall.
Was it electric? I thought we had the option to purchase electricity from different suppliers years ago.
Not that I recall anything. Kevin? Brian?
Was it a different utility?
No, it was, it was more involved than that. I thought it was similar to this program where electricity was provided by different venues.
We supplied by Edison since 1923, '24, '25. Literally, the first lines were put in in '26, so...
I wonder if that ties back to our old community services, when we had the community services, Lou?
I don't know, I've only been here since '77, so...
Yeah.
What was that? Run, what was that involved?
Community services went under in '71.
Yeah. Yeah, not that we can recall.
Well, it's been since I've lived here. We were getting some kind of a utility from other than the usual source. I thought it was electric. It might have been gas, I'm not sure.
Well...
But this really, it really sounds familiar to me, this type of, an operation.
Well, we can do a little research on the history of it. Nothing comes to mind for me, other than maybe our community services way back when.
Well, maybe it's just my CRS kicking in.
Yeah, that OA is catching up on all of us, buddy.
All right, well, thanks for
Thank you, Lou. Rick, Chris, appreciate it so much, and I know we'll be meeting again soon. Good to see you again. Thank you. Okay, city council business items. Communications, reports on regional boards. Berwin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Only have one report tonight from Vector, because RCTC and RTA have been on vacation this month. But everybody got excited last week when the notice come out that they had found a one West Nile mosquito on the Navy base. And for everybody's information, Vector is here in Norco every day of the week. They're in Eastvale every day of the week. They work along the river. They have several traps set out in the area. They trap, they trap mosquitoes, and if you've ever been out riding, you'll notice that there's cages around that has, some of them have chickens in them, and some of them have birds. And they go by there a couple of times a week and draw blood on those fowl and take it to the lab and check to see if they're infected with West Nile. But this is about the first West Nile mosquito they found in the area. This year, it was found on Lake Norconian, which they go in there regular and treat it for mosquitoes, as they do every body of water in the county. And I've been on one of their little tours with their technicians before, and there's a lot of bodies of water around. And they treat the ones up in the hills in the open area, they treat along the river, they treat Lake Norconian, they treat around Wayne Makin Park and over there. And so far, I don't know of anybody in town that's had any, that's contacted West Nile this year, nor do I know of any horses. And I've only heard of one horse in the state. We'll get another report tomorrow at the board meeting, but I've only heard of one horse in the state this year having West Nile. So it's better just to be safe and everybody protect theirself, wear long sleeves, use your mosquito spray and everything. And if we hear anything, we'll all have it put in the weekly highlights and everything. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Berwin. Robin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On August 3rd, Ted and I met with Frank and some folks from CDFA, if I'm not mistaken, to look at the biosecurity plan for Ingalls Park and being proactive about that particular document instead of reactive. And Frank and his staff have done a lot of work on that document, and the veterinarians that were there were quite pleased with the work and said, you know, that the group is on the right track as far as that is concerned. And the biggest thing on that, I think, is education for the public and those using the facilities on proper protocols for our animals that are in and out of the facilities. And then on August 11th, I had the pleasure of hosting the last concert of the summer concerts in the park. And was quite pleased with the turnout, and the band was wonderful, in my opinion. So I was super excited to be able to host that group on Friday night. And I would like to give a special thanks to the sponsors and obviously Parks and Rec for all the work that they do. It seemed to me like attendance was up all summer and really a great series of concerts for our residents and a good way for them all to come together and relax. So much appreciation to your staff. That's it.
Thank you. Ted?
I'm going to ditto the concert thing, Brian. Tell your staff, and I know Jeff isn't here tonight, but excellent choice of bands this year. Could you turn the heat down a little bit, though, this summer, if you can, and next year? I appreciate it. I would like to, Robin, and I'll follow up on that, when the biosecurity. And what's good is that they're going to, Frank, you learned one thing, they're going to concentrate on what we have most in Norco, are the horses and the chickens, to make sure we keep, people need to know, education is the key here. Other meetings I attended, I've attended a LAFCO ad hoc committee meeting on the islands and the pockets of unincorporated areas throughout the county. Out of the 40-some unincorporated pockets that we have in the county, we've kind of narrowed it down, or they did, to at least 11 they're going to target and try to get cities to either annex them into there at a, at a special consideration. And part of the meetings they'll have is they're going to request that a city manager or one of his representative, along with somebody from planning and a elected official come to these meetings, and they're going to discuss it, especially those 11 to 12 areas that they're going to try to get the cities to adopt. If, under the new law that was adopted back in, let's say, 2000, 2001, there doesn't need to be objection because of the county sees those as an easy way for them to give services to them, and they're, it's a select number areas. So even if the residents objected, they would still, they would come, they would be adopted. So we'll see more of that as it comes about. And it's just a county trying to clean up areas that they can't serve very easily. That's what they're trying to do. Other than that, Berwin forgot to tell you that we represented NART at the National Night Out there tonight. It was a great turnout. Scott, Eric, good job by the, by the public safety for bringing out all the toys. And I guess it's going to travel back to Eastville next year, right? As its rotation goes?
I'm not sure, but yes, it's basically rotated to the three contracts to the Arupa Valley Station.
Good turnout by your staff and the crews and everybody else, so thank you. And Scott, I know, even though the engine had to leave, it's, next year, we're going to hang the horse from the ladder to see stop traffic along the freeway. It was a good job. And Brian, your staff did an excellent job representing the city there. It was a beautiful booth, very, probably one of the nicer ones compared to, everything was there, everything that means Norco was at that booth, and it really looked good. So pass that on to your staff, they did a good job. Had a veterans executive committee meeting. Hopefully, Brian, we're going to get something to bring to the council here in October? Okay, I'm going to make sure, I'm going to hold you to that, so, okay? All right. All right, so there. And then just a reminder to everyone, while you're here, so we don't wait till the end of the meeting, this weekend, the Norco Manipalacy PRCA starts its 33rd year of rodeo Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Please, this is tradition here in town, and since I was one of the founding members, I encourage you all to go. And then finally, as a Norco alumni, 50 years. This begins 1967, so the football, high school started, football season starts next Friday night. Thank you.
Thank you, Ted. Kevin?
My RCA meeting was canceled, and the WRCOG, pretty much, we covered everything. I did attend the Chamber of Commerce today, their monthly luncheon, and there was a presentation by waste management, which was very interesting. I also attended a Rotary meeting. One of the things we're doing is we're beginning to look for funding for some of the things we want to do at the memorial, the MIA memorial, and the Blue and Gold Star Mothers Memorial, the things we're working on. And one of our new members of the Veterans Committee is actually with them, and we're hoping they're going to give us $5,000, we're hoping. I have a meeting next week with Monster and different places like that to sort of see how they feel about it. I attended the Historic Commission meeting, and they asked me to come because they're getting ready for their big sort of unveiling during the LNF event in October. And I have to admit, Chuck is doing a great job. He is doing a great job. He is getting things really organized, and I think they're going to have a lot of cool things to show, and they were very excited and didn't have to say much. It was pretty cool. I attended several small Riverside high-voltage meetings, and I have to tell you, increasingly more and more Norconians are showing up to these. And quite honestly, I just don't understand why Riverside is pushing this. I just don't understand it. We've come out against it, but I just don't understand it. I don't understand, and Edison has nothing to do with it, I get that, they're just kind of the facilitator. Please know that, once again to Brian, I had a meeting for the wheelchair basketball tournament, and Michelle has it wired. It's unbelievable. We anticipate 20 teams. We're the only sanctioned wheelchair basketball tournament in Riverside County, San Bernardino County. And so we're anticipating, as many of you know, wheelchair basketball was born in the city of Norco, the first official game occurred here. Verney Fletcher, some of you remember, fell ill, and he was dehydrated on vacation, and so send your prayers to him. I got to do a walkthrough at the River and Cory Don, our new development, and it's amazing. That is going to be such an amazing shopping center. I'm very excited. Don't forget our December 7th, we have a tentative agreement from the Admiral to come, and then what I'm going to do is, when, the Admiral's going to be visiting in a few weeks, apparently, and I'm going to see if Ted and I can go over there and see if we can get his band to come here and do a concert. Ted came up with the idea to do a concert to help raise money for our memorial. Veterans Committee, Film Festival for the 50th Anniversary. If you know anybody who's a filmmaker, we're looking for films now to show in February for the 50th anniversary of Norco High School. I have some really strange ones. So, and then finally, to kind of give a final thing on Hangar 385. Some of you know, we tried, we sent a letter, and we really tried to save the hangar, and it was torn down a couple of weeks ago. I had a gentleman come up to me at a meeting I was at at Riverside, and he said, "I really appreciate the fact" appreciate the fact that, you know, Norco cares about their history, and you care about the hangar, and you tried to save it. He said, because I received my son there. And one of the things that was not in the HABs report, which is unforgivable, that no elected official would help us, that's where Marines came home. And that was not in the HABs report. A HABs report is supposed to tell, when you tear down a historic building and it's on the National Register, you're supposed to tell the story for future generations, and how you forget to talk about Marines who have been killed in action, and that's where they delivered them, and that's not in the report? Shame on everybody who did not help me. It just makes me so mad. So hopefully, the baloney that you build one and tear down another, we can get our congressman, and no offense to the congressman, but it just makes me mad that that wasn't in that report. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Well, I don't have too much. Our Chino Disalter Authority Board meeting was canceled, so I got to go to National Night Out and Lieutenant and Chief and Parks and Rec. You guys did good. It was fun to visit with y'all. Except you weren't there, Scott. You represented you well. Let's go ahead and move to City Council consent items. Does any member wish to pull any items?
Item D, please.
D or B?
Yeah, D is in dog.
I'll go ahead and pull E. I'll entertain a motion for the rest.
Councilmembers Hannah?
Yes.
Grunmeyer?
Yes.
Bash?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Hoffman?
Yes.
Mayor Newton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item 2D, Robin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I pulled this to say thank you, thank you, thank you for getting grant money to do amazing things for our community, and in particular, for our schools and our kids. A lot of us know, and we've made a joke already today about, oh, nobody speeds in Norco, but we know, or anybody that drives in front of a school, and it is drop-off time, knows how incredibly dangerous it is. And for city staff to work on getting a grant to put all of these things in front of all of our schools, kudos, and thank you so, so much. And the fact that additional funds are not expected to exceed $7,000, job well done. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, I had a question on this, just a small one. In the staff report where it says, like, two and then parentheses, six solar-powered feedback signs, and then item two says four parentheses, ten solar-powered rectangular beacons. And then I went back to this purchase order, and I was just, I'm just having a hard time reading two meaning six and four meaning ten.
Yeah, you're correct. I mean, that's an error. Again, there's gonna be a total of six solar-powered feedback signs.
Okay.
Because we put them in pairs. In these three locations, we're gonna put them, so that's an error on my part. And the other one, it should be five, because again, they're in pairs. So it's, it's...
It's not a four.
It's not a four. It should be ten, but it's total, so we're pairing them up on every crosswalk.
Got it.
Yes.
Yeah, that was throwing me a little bit. And my last little question on that is, why would we pay sales tax on these?
We have to pay sales tax on products we purchase.
Yeah, we're not exempt.
Yeah, we're not exempt.
We're not exempt?
I wish.
You make us exempt?
No.
Okay. But it's good to see, I just, yeah, on the purchase order. So Kevin?
You answered some of my questions, but I also want to point out that WRCOG, Rick's already left, can you be sure to thank him and Chad, good job on this, because this is actually a grant from WRCOG? So this is yet another place where we're able to partner up with the county and to receive money to do something that I agree with, Robin, is super important. So you were responsible for this? Are you the one that did this, or Andy, who did this?
It was a joint effort, as far as from Roger, myself, Andy, but again, it's really WRCOG making the money available and giving us the ability to pick these kind of programs that made it possible.
Yeah, I just, I really want to highlight that our partnership with WRCOG has been outstanding.
And it's also really helped at first at Tamaskul also.
Yes.
Though we've already done.
That was a great project that the council directed and wanted, and it became our benchmark for what we want to do in the city. Hopefully, there's future grants to WRCOG, and in the following year, maybe we continue and do the rest of the other schools.
Good.
Councilmembers Hannah?
Yes.
Grunmeyer?
Yes.
Bash?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Hoffman?
Yes.
Mayor Newton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. On item 2E, Chad, I just had a couple of little questions. On our capacity, I was trying to understand this correctly, our, currently, our conveyance is two and a half million gallons per day, right? And...
Our conveyance is 2.2. It should be 2.2. We bought another 500,000 in the expansion to get us to 2.7.
Okay. Because this said, conveyance 2.5, capacity 2.2. First page of staff report.
Oh, sorry. I'll have to verify what, it may have just been a clara clara.
Okay. But I guess what I'm trying to get at is, then we have a capacity, right, of 2.7 million gallons a day? That, how much are we putting in to the treatment plan?
We currently, on average, is about 1.8 million gallons a day.
1.8?
1.8.
Okay. So if you take that, that we'll have a capacity of 2.7, so we can go up to another 900,000 gallons a day, but let's just call it a million gallons a day for easy round numbers. Are we allowed at any point, can we lease capacity to another agency? Does that possibility exist in this JPA?
I'm not sure, because in past issues, when somebody has done, the example of JCSD, they have in the past exceeded their capacity, they've kind of used the JPA's total capacity to help, to give them extra capacity, but they pay a premium for it.
Okay.
And we basically, the administrator gives us a credit because we're giving some of our capacity. I don't claim to understand how they do it, if it's equal in some way, if Norco didn't use some, and Western didn't use some, Home Gardens, do they each share in that, how it's done? But I'm not sure if we effectively can just say, I'm going to give my 500,000 to JCSD. It's certainly a possibility, and certainly the JPA would entertain as far as discussion, and if it wasn't, if it wasn't prohibited, allowed, they could certainly change the rules to allow it, because that's the benefit of the JPA, is the members can change the rules. So we didn't want to...
Knowing that we're good on capacity and into, way into the future, that, so let's say JCSD, they run over, are you saying then we get a share of that credit, or does that all go to, when they're paying a premium, to be overcapacity?
Right. They basically pay us or the other groups that have capacity for using that capacity.
So we get a portion of that?
Currently now, yes, is what I believe how it's done.
Okay.
I don't think it's gonna be a concern for JCSD in the future, because they bought quite a bit of capacity because of their expected future demands. But right now, they are using capacity from other agencies that's being unused.
Okay. Then my last question is, and this is just more of a frustration, and I should really hold Hoffman's feet to the fire, but how did we start with a 12 million gallon project at 44,000, or 44 million, excuse me, and we add 2 million gallons per day, and the project goes up almost $30 million?
I wish I knew the answer. I honestly don't have the history.
I just, it's beyond me with this bunch.
I had that same conversation at the last meeting. And by the way, it's, the RICO plan will be 14 billion gallons.
Yeah, 14 million gallons per day.
And their expansion, and so this, it came back to, and Chad was there at the last meeting, and my comment to them when they asked for the increase was, we need to hold them to task, because we can't go back to our residents all the time. We just set ourselves up, and you know this with the sewer rate, and it's a very frustrating deal with it. Part of the problem they came with, and I'm not picking on the management team, but I will pick on the management team, there, I just think this, this thing is way beyond their control. And they've done some things that they were recommended by these so-called experts, and we're paying for that, some of that mistakes. And Chad, correct me if I'm wrong, is the outside agencies, the firm from Holland, they came in and tried to fix this thing. And again, this was, I said enough is enough. They're, according to them, they're still under their initial budget to build this thing, but that means that you were there, and now you're asking for more. But we have, we're under our initial budget. They're like a couple of dollars under their initial budget. This was, they just, they want the whole pie.
Well, I mean, do you know my frustration? That's why I pointed you to be on that board, because they wouldn't let me in anymore. But I just, having a hard time figuring out if I can get 12 million gallons a day for 44 million, why did two more gallons, 2 million more gallons a day cost me $72,000?
Yeah, unfortunately, I don't have the history of that organization when this was done. This was a couple of years ago, when they got one to intervention this project. I know they added in specialized treatment to try to reduce the amount of sludge and the drawing, and that's part of the technology they're struggling with right now, so, and I'm not sure how much that increased the cost. But again, when you go from 12 million to treat another 2 million, there is, it's, it can be a significant economy of scale, you know, because you're enlarging everything, your processes, et cetera. But I apologize, I don't know the specifics.
Yeah, okay.
But I do understand your point.
Yeah, I know you do. That's why I like to see us take this over. Give you a real project to run. Go ahead, Andy.
Mr. Mayor, going back to your initial question in terms of how much capacity we're currently on, if you look at the JPA, page 15, they'll show that we currently have 2.2 and 2.5.
Okay.
I believe that, I shouldn't have stopped.
The part is correct.
Yes.
Okay. So the bright side is, we're good for capacity for quite a while.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Is that a motion?
Sure. I'll make the motion, Cheryl.
Okay. Councilmembers Hannah?
Yes.
Grunmeyer?
Yes.
Bash?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Hoffman?
Yes.
Mayor Newton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Now go into public comments. Are there any cards?
Yes, Mayor. First speaker is Justin DeWale from Assemblymember Sabrina Sarmontes's office.
Evening, Justin.
Evening, Mayor, Council. Not too much update legislatively from our office. Summer recess is almost over. Legislature is back in session next week. We do, however, have a couple more district events coming up this week. We're having an open house at our new office on North Main Street in Corona tomorrow evening, 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. And then on Friday, we are having our senior scam stopper at the Corona Public Library, 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. So do come out and tell your friends and neighbors about both those events. Thank you.
I have one comment for you that...
Yeah.
I always forget all these little things I go to. And last Saturday, went to the 50th anniversary of the Sons of Liberty, and the city did give a plaque, and Justin was up there and gave a plaque from the Democratic Party, and...
Really weird.
But you did good.
Thank you. It was the State Assembly.
I know that.
Might as well have been, I suppose.
It was great.
I did tell Justin we would not boo him tonight.
You know, the root beer was great.
Yeah, that's right.
The root beer was really good.
Thank you, Justin.
Gregory Daniel?
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. I'm here to discuss a matter on MDP line N-7 project, which is on reservoir. It's come to my attention that the work they're doing out there, according to your city standard laws, it says if any existing utilities interfere with the new project, all my work must stop, and they must start figuring out a good way to resolve it. Unfortunately, this is not happening on our street. They're coming out, they're trying to put in the new storm drain line. There's three homes, including my own, that are being interfered with by the existing, or the new storm drain line is coming through. Our line is hitting basically in the middle of this new storm drain line. The city inspector who was out there on site, Dan, comes out and he says, oh, we're just gonna turn around and put a siphon underneath it. Okay, I work in construction, been in the business for over 35 years. Okay, I know the codes inside and out. You cannot put a siphon in. You can put a lift station in, you can do a lot of things, but putting a siphon underneath it and creating an area where sewage is gonna set underneath that line, backfeed the fumes and everything back into a homeowner's property, and also cause an area to be clogging, is not reasonable and is against all, it's against the Green Book laws for the state of California. Dan's response was, well, we've done this before in other areas in town. I tried contacting, I got the notice that they were gonna start this work on the 9th of this month. The notice came on the night, no pre-warning. Everything just happened once they were supposed to be doing pot-holing. Instead, they came in and started demolition. You know, the way they just come in and do whatever they want to with no care for the residents is beyond belief. And their resolve that they gave me was, we're gonna put in a siphon because we've done it before. Well, that doesn't make it legal, it doesn't make it right, and it doesn't conform to standards. In your own words here in the city of Norco, everything must stop until they find a reasonable resolve that meets standards. And the resolve that they're trying to bootleg in right now does not meet city standards. And this is not the first time they've done stuff like this, but this is a permanent structure that's going in now. And I'm not gonna have my home, or my neighbors also are concerned about this, turn around creating a problem that is against all city standards, even through the state of California. And so, and the fact that I've tried calling Mr. Nelson on the 9th about it, I have never received a call back. They, I'm just getting shoved aside. I had to come to city council for somebody to actually listen to me. And I said, I'm having my attorney draw up something, we have to file a civil class action suit to get this resolved. My neighbors are in agreement with me, we will resolve it, because they can't just go about doing things against city standards or state standards. Thank you.
Okay. Let me, let me say this, that we're not allowed to comment.
Correct.
Being that it's public comments. If you have any specifics that, if you have time tonight after the meeting, if you'd like to be...
I would be more than happy to sit down with you.
Right, if you'd like to meet with our Public Works Director and City Manager for a few minutes. I just wanted to make that clear to you, so...
I'd be more than happy to.
Appreciate that. But what I would like to ask Council, and if you want to have a seat, you can, I mean, make yourself comfortable, is that in an effort to communicate and listen to residents that take the time to come to speak to us at the podium under public comments, I did ask, because I was aware of this, and I spoke, your wife called me earlier this morning.
Yes.
I did want to just have our Public Works Director just address this generally, very briefly, and also ask that the city manager at some point, with the situation that with engineering, and once that site condition can be evaluated, that perhaps we reach out and then meet with the affected homeowners.
Okay.
Once everything was...
The only thing I'm concerned about is in the city standard for the notes, it says, if anything utility comes into conflict and they've known about the conflict... if anything utility comes into conflict, and they've known about the conflict for a few days now, that all work will stop until they do a resolve. They're not stopping work. They're proceeding, and they're still doing things, and they're planning on coming through and just bootlegging this into my, my property unless something is done immediately. And that's why I took the step to come down here today, because they're just ignoring it and going on with it. And that's not the way it is, and that's not the way it reads inside of the Norco standards, and it's not the way it reads in the Green Book standards.
Correct.
And the fact that I had to come here to get some resolve, it's a bit aggravating, but like I said, I work in the trade, and I know what's legal, and I know what's not, and what they're trying to do is not legal, and they can't just throw it, throw us under the bus. The other neighbors and residents who they've done this to, who are, without knowledge, are probably having to have a sewer guy come out and clean out their sewers periodically. Dan said, he goes, we've done this to other homes in the neighborhood.
Okay.
And if you've done it to other neighbors, those neighbors don't know there's a problem. And if they're paying for us, got to come out to clean their sewer all the time, heaven forbid.
Right, understood.
Thank you.
I understand that. Thank you so much. Chad?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. In regards to the capital projects, the, when there's conflicts in a contractor, when he goes out and he might hit a, and realize there's a lateral in his way, or a, or a gas line in the way, again, project does stop. You work with the inspector, you work with the engineer, and you come up to a resolution of how you're going to resolve the conflict. That's what's been done here. It's been done on every other project we do. That conflict isn't resolved with the resident. The lateral belongs to the city. The resident by code is obligated to maintain the lateral. And why I'm not concerned about this issue in regards to using the siphon, it is a customary practice to do. It is done all over the state. There is not against the Green Book. We have conversed with many engineers, because this issue came up, and they reaffirmed it's not a problem. It's, and it is commonly done. And the, actually, the resident is protected in this case, because in our municipal, because it states, there's two, two instances where the city is obligated to maintain the lateral, is when tree roots block the lateral, or when there's determined to be a defect in the construction of the lateral by the city, or its, or its contractor. In this case, if the siphon was deemed to plugged, or became an issue because of the siphon in some way, and again, we would camera it, verify it, the city would be obligated to clean it and remove that debris, not the resident. That's the only two instances. So the resident's protected if it occurred, and we camera it, verified what the issue was, and it was deemed to be an issue with the siphon, the city's obligated to maintain it. So the, the resident is really protected against any issues for them that have to, to deal with in this case. But the use of siphons is very common. And it's, it's very unusual to go the other route, where we would make a change, where we now have to stop a project, go to the resident, have to improvements on their property, which now means we bought those improvements, basically, for life, because we made those improvements. And what I'm referring to is if we went, if we raised up his lateral a little bit higher so we can go over the pipe, because right now it's got a certain angle, we have to change his pitch to get over the, over the existing, the storm drains being put in, well, now we're talking about basically owning that, that repair forever on his property. We focus on only saying within the city right-of-way, for liability purposes primarily, as we don't want to do that. So what we've proposed to do is absolutely normal practices. We did deal with the issue in that there's a term to me, and a conflict, we go out, look at it, figure out it, and then we determine the issue. It's not something that's determined with the resident, because it's still, the solution is still a very functional solution, and they're not impacted. In this case, if they were impacted, it's easy to prove, and the city would be responsible for maintaining it.
When you do a siphon, and I don't want to belabor all this, you know, I'll get to Andy in one second. When you do a siphon, do you put a cleanout near that in the street?
Normally, what we do in that case, we'd put a cleanout near the property line.
Okay.
So they can easily be cleaned out from that point going back towards the main.
Okay. So Andy and I had a discussion about having a meeting, and at least having Dominic look at, at this. Is that still our plan?
Certainly, I think Chad today called an engineer at Dominic's office.
Dominic was unavailable, but I talked with his lead engineer.
Dominic was unavailable, and he did confirm that the protocol we're undertaking is perfectly okay. Didn't see a problem with it.
Are we allowed to ask questions, or is this...
We really shouldn't.
Yeah, I didn't want us to go too far into it.
But I want to convey, this is an ongoing project, and any delays in the project could cost the city even more money, because the contractor gets impacted, so we have...
I mean, I understand that. But I want us to, and it's not only one residence, it's three residents that are impacted, and I want us to be able to reach out, and whether it's, you have Dominic's firm do a drawing or something, describe it, show it, and that council be kept in the loop on this. I just want to see a little more communication in this matter.
Can I ask a general question?
Absolutely.
I also ask staff follow-up on that.
Okay, so let's just, generally speaking, so how would, let's say they have a problem, how do they show that they have a problem? I mean, not to be graphic, is it sewage backing up in their house, or do they have to prove they have a problem, or how does that work?
Correct. It's, it's, it's the property owners' responsibility. They would hire a plumber, because they have a backup somewhere, they're not sure where it was, they're not sure if it's roots, what it could be. They would hire a plumber. The plumber would, would video the line, determine what the blockage was, and then we get that video, turns out it was tree branches, we clearly see it, we pay for all the remediation that was done.
The cost of finding, if it turns out it's theirs, do we reimburse them for the, if it turns out to be, so for the plumber and everything, would we reimburse them?
Correct.
Well, I just want to be kept in the loop on this. So, thank you, that's all.
Okay. Yeah, I know we can't go too far on this, but I'd like to see us just have a level of communication with council and the homeowners, okay? Thank you, Chad. Cheryl?
Colleen Daniel.
Good evening. Mine's not on that. Mine's a little different.
Okay.
Because I had forgotten all about this. He did mention how we received a letter. The letter was printed on August 3rd, and then it was mailed out, post-dated on August 7th. We received the letter on August 9th. Okay. I had called, okay, this was the letter to telling us that they're going to start work. Great, we've been waiting for it. I had called several months, I had called last year. Is my tree going to be cut? Can I move my tree if it's going to be cut? Big O save on the ground. Tree was not to be cut. On the 10th, I wake up, my tree is dead, cut down on the ground. Watering that tree for 20 years, fruit off of it, because it was graft, Greg, my husband, had promised Mrs. Herrera, when he bought the home almost 20 years ago from her, he would baby that tree. Her husband grafted that tree, her husband babied that tree. He told her, I will do everything I can to make this tree fruit. She even would come by several years later, okay? Her husband passed away on a horse accident around the corner. Anyways, so when I called the city several months ago, and I said, listen, I need to know, is the tree going to be moved? What's going to happen? We can move it. Oh, no, the tree's fine. It will be, it's not in the way. No notice, no nothing. I think that something needs to be done. Okay, isn't it when the contractors get the bid, they have 45 days, they've got to go ahead and contact back, given them their plans and all that kind of stuff, to what they're going to do, when, when they're going to start this and that? Don't you think that the residents on that whole block, not just our block, we're talking the other part of reservoir, Willow, whatever, every single resident should know at least 30 days, 45 days, 60 days, or when a bid is going to start? Are we supposed to start going online and look at, oh, what is, what's Norco going to do now? Who's going to bid? What job? What's this? What's going to go down on my property, even though it's a horse trail? Yes, we're responsible. How responsible are we? I stopped watering that side over, almost two years ago. Weeds grew this high, because I had tripped over the one drain thing that they put up. So who, who takes care of that property? The resident does, the homeowner does. And for them to come out and just kill the darn tree, something needs to be done. We're losing trees like crazy around here. And honestly, our whole block looks really crappy now. When you come around the curve, dead. You know, is this what's supposed to be, Norco? Anyways. And I, and I put that on to Chad's line up and down, okay? Because I called, and I called, left messages, nobody ever returns. I was grateful you returned my call today. Thank you, Andy. And you returned my call. Thank you.
Thank you. And city manager and I had, did have a discussion about trees today, so. Cheryl.
Raul Morales.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. You asked for the other neighbor, and I'm here.
Hey.
Just, I mean, I kind of got, most of my, a lot of the questions I had answered tonight, Mr. Daniels' neighbor. My only concern is on that siphon, and I want to make sure it gets done the right way, and if that is the right way. I mean, my only concern is, I mean, siphon is going to keep retaining stuff all the time there, and I'm sure nobody would like that smell, that stuff going back through that pipe into the residence, for the family to be, you know, smelling that stuff. So I know you guys have city codes, I'm not an engineer and anything like that, I just want to make sure it gets done the right way. And if that is the right way, then, you know, as long as it's not going to cost me any money down the road, where we're going to end up spending money on plumbers. And like you said, you know, yeah, they're going to send a plumber, but the bottom line is, you're going to have to spend money to try to resolve that problem. So, like I said, some of the questions were answered before I even came up here.
Okay. Certainly appreciate your time, and...
Thank you.
You're welcome to come by anytime with your concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Matt Woody.
Hi, Matt.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, Council, and to all the residents and citizens that are gathered. I just wanted to say hello. I'm glad to be here tonight to hear about some of the business going on in the city. It was great to see the council and, and Mr. Z recognize Kara. She, she's been doing great work for a long time, and obviously, right here in, in Norco. So the reason I'm here is just to introduce myself to people. I know I've met a few of the people I've seen here tonight, I've seen a few faces that are familiar, but again, my name's Matt Woody. I'm running for Congress here in the area, hoping to provide a realistic challenge to our longtime congressman. I know Councilmember Bash referenced him briefly in his comments, and, and hopefully, hopefully he's responsive to the council. I don't feel he's very responsive to the citizens of our district, and regardless. But I will be out, meeting lots of people here for the next several months, 10 months or so, up until the election. And I'm looking forward to chatting with people in more detail, creating good relationships. I really, I'm trying to bring the kind of relationship that, that you all seem to have with the citizens of Norco here to a wider scope of, of not just Norco, but Corona, Elson, or Murrieta, Temecula, Menifee, all the residents of our district, and really keep the focus on the people and on the Constitution of the United States. So that's, that's me in a nutshell. I'll be happy to, to speak with everybody later on and in the future. Thanks.
Thank you so much.
Bonnie.
Best of luck.
I'm sorry, Mayor.
No, that's all right, Cheryl.
Bonnie Slager.
Hi, Bonnie.
Again, I just want to remind everybody to get their fare buttons. It's only a couple weeks till the fair. They're $10 pre-sale, $15 at the gate. And also, Councilman Hoffman mentioned the rodeo this weekend, but my favorite part of the rodeo is on Sunday afternoon, the Challenge Children's Rodeo. If you can all help with it, Jean said be there at 3:00, so come out to help with the rodeo. That's really a lot of fun. And tomorrow night is our monthly Norco Horsemen's Meeting, and our speakers are some of the children that are going to be, will have their animals at the auction at the fair. So it's, it's always fun to hear the, the kids talk about their animals, so I hope you can all join us tomorrow night for our meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie.
Kay Omera.
Hi. Good evening, Councilmembers and Mayor. Issues, I respectfully request the follow, following items to be put on your agenda for a vote resolutions. Number one, please reinstate the action where the City of Norco shall hereby require the E-Verify for all city hiring and all businesses in the City of Norco, and for those company employers wishing to do business in the City of Norco. Number two, please vote resolution that the City of Norco will not be a sanctuary city, and it will uphold the federal laws of the United States of America. Number three, vote resolution to support, support the voter fraud commission, which has been set up by President Trump, and is headed by Chair by Chris Kobach, the Secretary of Kansas, and co-chaired, co-chaired by Vice President Pence. Please vote to assist, support, and assist them in our city and Riverside County by all the means you have available to them and their actions to purge the fraudulent votes in our country. Number four, please take action against Assemblyman Cervantes for the intentions so stated in her public ad in the Press Enterprise Sunday, August 13, 2017. Her words are insulting and are full of hate to promote the agenda of turning California into a sanctuary state, and to go against the federal laws of immigration of the United States of America. As a matter of fact, how about taking action to stand against all the bills and the propositions of the governor and the legislators that have been passed by this legislature of California to stop the enforcement, enforcement of the laws of this nation? And number five, please vote that the city, that this committee will not disobey federal immigration law, or any federal law thwarted by the legislators of California. We must now stand together as a community to uphold the rule of law in our city, our state, and in our nation. And I thank you in advance. And I am not a bigot, and nobody is a bigot in the United States of America for wanting to uphold the rule of law in this nation. Take that to your little miss, Cervantes. Thank you.
Thank you, Kay.
That concludes public comments.
Thank you, Cheryl. Okay, let's move into public hearings. Item 5A. This is going to be on, ordinance number 1025, first reading. Chad?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a follow-up to the presentation that was done by Deborah Cog regarding the Nexus Study, that was recently developed, as part of that process was revising the, the rules of the Tump program. So this ordinance basically rescinds all the previous ordinance we had for, basically the, the program mechanisms for the Tump program. They've now been reshaped based off of the member agencies and their input, and now we're seeking council's approval on this ordinance to adopt the new Tump language, which is basically going to be the implementation mechanism of how we assess potential charges to new development.
Thank you, Chad. Does council have any questions for staff? Seeing none, this is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Cheryl?
I don't have any cards on this item.
Thank you. I'll close the public hearing and bring it back for any discussion and action.
Is this, I need two motions, Mayor. I just want to be clear.
Right, because this is...
This the ordinance? Okay.
It's two items, we only just... We only discussed the Tump document first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Because I think we wanted to get them.
Did you want, you wanted to do them separately, I thought.
Right. I just need two motions, one for the ordinance and one for the resolution. I just want to be clear on, on the motion.
You need another motion?
Just for the ordinance. I just want, okay. Councilmember Hannah?
Sorry, before we vote, should the ordinance be read by title?
Yes, I apologize.
Thank you. This is an ordinance of the City of Norco, California, amending Chapter 3.50 Western Riverside County Transportation Uniform Mitigation Fee Program to update participation in the Western Riverside County Transportation Uniform Mitigation Fee Tump Program, Code Amendment 2017-09.
Councilmembers Hannah?
Yes.
Grunmeyer?
Yes.
Bash?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hoffman?
Yes.
Mayor Newton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The second item on this topic is the actual adoption and approval of the resolution for the actual fees that the Tump program will assess. So the fees are carried separately by resolution, so they can be easier modified in the future if they ever need to be changed. There are a couple revisions that we did last minute referencing, and I want to point that you should have in front of you regarding the start dates of some of these fees. On page three, which is section two, we are changing the start date of these fees to December 1st, 2017. In section B, again, same start date, December 1st, 2017. And on the back page in section five, it talks about the effective date, the resolution. And the key on this is we want to start the fee that's related to the retail commercial to be effective as the 30 days occurs after the ordinance has been adopted. So that would be effective, actually, it should be October 6th in conjunction.
October 6th.
So this should be October 6th. It says October 1st. I apologize, it should be October 6th.
Okay.
And then the rest of the rates will go into effect December 1st. So that means all the current rates that we have by resolution are still in effect. The only one that changes effective October 6th will be the retail commercial rate. The other rates will stay in effect because honestly, they're lower until the newer fees come December 1st. So hopefully, some of these projects that are coming through will get in a little better rate on those charges, but they will become effective on December 1st. So those are the changes I want to clarify and ask for your approval of this resolution.
Thank you, Chad.
And then Chad, just to clarify from the presentations, the retail rates are actually lower under the new schedule, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
I just want to ask.
Just want to ask my question on the rates. So anything that's in the queue now that's already being proposed, these rates won't affect them until December 1st, is what you're saying? Are the, are the one, the date, December 1st, right?
That's when they pull the permits.
Is that, well, that's what I'm asking is, okay. I, that's why I just want to know when they, when they pull the permits. That, that's clarified. Okay. That's why I needed, thank you.
The lowering of the rates was actually pretty, a lot of discussion, and it's a really good thing, so. Yeah, no, but I just meant that, that at the WR cog level and staff level, staff really, really listened and figured out a way to do it. And we got a lot of buy-in from the building, from the building community, too.
Yeah. I mean, the commercial was getting pounded.
Right.
And that's the biggest help, I think. Cheryl, do we need anything else? Just a motion? We're okay, public hearing-wise and everything?
Uh huh. Okay.
Move to approve.
Councilmembers Hannah?
Yes.
Grunmeyer?
Yes.
Bash?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hoffman?
Yes.
Mayor Newton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, Chad. Item 5B, ordinance 1026. I've got that. Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Thank you, Brian. This is an ordinance to amend section of our code 16.12.015 related to the number of dogs on a lot. There was some ambiguity in the code section, so we worked with the city attorney to develop, to remove that ambiguity. For a number of years, we haven't had any issues, but recently in some citations that were issued, the administrative hearing officer recommended that that needs to be clearer. So we went back to the city attorney to clarify that. And that's what this ordinance does, is really clarify that particular part of the language, which references a kennel in the previous ordinance. So it really clarifies that more than four dogs is unlawful. So that's really what we've done here in this ordinance change. With that, I'll answer any questions. Any questions for staff? I just had one. I always thought it was four dogs. Is that the urban legend or? No, no, you cannot have more than four dogs. It's unlawful. And that's where the language, the issue was that the way the law already is defining maintaining more than five dogs on a property, but it, what it meant is you can't have five or more. And that's where the ambiguity came into play. So what, we've never had an issue till recently with the language, but in the recent hearings we've had, it was recommended that if that is the intent, it needs to be clearer in the language. And so we did not favor in two particular hearings related to that. And so with this change, it makes it very clear that it's unlawful to have more than four dogs. Thank you. Any other questions for staff? This is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing.
No cards on this item.
Thank you, Cheryl. I'll close the public hearing, bring it back for any further discussion and action.
This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Norco, amending Norco Municipal Code Section 612010 to establish the maximum number of dogs per lot, Code Amendment 2017-10.
Councilmembers Hannah?
Yes.
Grunmeyer?
Yes.
Bash?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hoffman?
Yes.
Mayor Newton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Cheryl. We'll now have City Council, City Manager, Staff Communications, Kevin?
Thanks briefly. I'm, I'm a little confused at Streets and Trails level. My understanding is they were going to interpret, codify, whatever you want to call it, how we're going to deal with the municipal code, which states that the people take care of the trails in front of their homes. And I don't know if that's being worked on or not, but I, I'm, I'm a little concerned because personally, I don't think, I think, as I said, I said, we either going to support our trails or we're not. And I would like to see Streets and Trails finally deal with the question. Are we going to have people, as our code says, not real clearly, take care of the trails and in fact even answer the question of people across the street from the trails? In other words, it's a community asset. I'd really like that question to be answered once and for all, and then we decide whether or not the trails are truly important, which I think they are. And if we're going to maybe adequately or some way find a way to fund them. One of my suggestions had been that people have the option, if they choose, to take care of the trail themselves, enforce the code. It doesn't have to be the construction standard. Or we create an entity in which they can pay a few dollars a month and we take care of the trail for them. Or if they don't take care of their trail, then what we do is we come in, we take care of it, and we bill them the exact amount they would have paid for that. I don't know what the solution is, but I really do believe that if we don't take care of large lots to trails to open space, we're going to be in trouble. And so I'd like to see, if Council agrees, I'd like to see that question answered at the Street and Trails level and give us a recommendation of what their opinion is. Secondly, I'd like to know the status of the manure-to-energy plant that we've talked about. I'm, I'm not even sure who's on that committee right now. I think Greg is. Who's, who's with you, Greg? I, I'm, I'm reading about all kinds of new stuff. I don't know if it's true or not. I don't know if it's just the, you know, what's, it has to be true if it's on the Internet. But I, I really think that we need to look at that and, and find a solution if it's out there and just maybe get an update. I'm, I'm not sure what the status is. But those two issues, I think, are critical to maintaining large lots to trails to open space, which I think is in jeopardy.
We can certainly do an update on our, on our subcommittee.
And how do we, I mean, if you guys are in agreement, I would like Streets and Trails to specifically address my question.
What would be the proper way, as far as, just direct staff?
Yes, we can take an item to Streets and Trails, but let me make sure that we're on the same page as far as what Streets and Trails is going to be charged with doing. I think the code is clear in the, the public works draft, or recently made a presentation on the responsibilities of residents with, with respect to taking care of trails in front of their property. So the issue, I believe, is how do we enforce those provisions that currently exist in the code? And for those who cannot take care of it, how do we determine a funding mechanism whereby the city will take care of that? If that's the item you're asking of, we certainly can take that to the Streets and Trails Commission to have them examine that. But I think that I know ambiguity as far as what the code provides, as far as the responsibility of residents taking, taking care of trails in front of their property.
Well, as I read it, it doesn't seem all that clear, and, and I'm, I'm totally fine with what you've just said, Andy. Maybe they'll come up with a different way to fund the trails. I don't know. I would just like to answer the question finally, what we're going to do about the preservation of the trails in the City of Norco, how we're going to fund those trails, if we're going to fund those trails, what are we going to do moving forward? It's a question that actually we've been asking for quite a, which most people don't understand that, you know, 2009 was very difficult. A lot of what we were doing is just becoming solvent, keeping our police department, keeping our substation, fire department. Those were key, critical issues. Well, now we have a little breathing room. I think we need to address trails.
Chad.
Councilman Bash, I can say emphatically, the last, stuck committee, we had a very healthy conversation about trails, what trails to be done, how to maintain trails, what's the future of the trails. And we're going to re-rack more items to have even greater discussions about that because part of that is discussing what do we want our trails to look like, how they should be maintained, what is that standard? So that is something we were working on. We can add in regarding potential discussion, if there's any way to find a mechanism to ensure that the, to assist the residents in regards to if they can't maintain the trail, how we can, whether it's an assessment or something they can pay. And there's a lot of legal things with that, as far as what could be involved. But it is something that we're taking up and we're going to aggressively work on.
All right, thank you.
Chad.
I've got a couple of things. We talked earlier about the school safety and Chad, how's the, or Eric, how's the, these three-way stop sign at Hillside and Second Street now that the schools been in place? Has that been a big impact? Good, positive? Hopefully it is.
I don't have any data on that right now. We could check and do some research. I think the telltale where the most heavy traffic is occurring now with the, with the opening of the school year, so we can check on that and report back to you.
I just curious, because that was a long, long-term request from the school to even the residents that live in there. So it doesn't have to be a big formal presentation, if you can just, it's been in place, maybe come back in December, see how we did, if we had less accidents or less congestion back there because of it, we appreciate it, just to see if we did something positive up there. And then the other thing, and Chad, this is back into your corner. Waste management, we were talking about doing a, a citywide collection, and we were going to use, hopefully, the court on staging area parking lot to do that. Could you get with Glenda from Chavez from Waste Management and find out, that was going to be our, instead of the public dump day, that we plan on doing that? And that's what we talked about at our meeting there with them, and they were going to look at that. And I know Julie's gone now, but if you can follow up that, make sure we, whatever dump day you, you selected, but let's try to avoid putting it on the days of, in October, like with, avoid those days that we already have big events scheduled, so we don't do that. Appreciate, probably latter part of October. And then finally, this one's to Steve, and I don't know if it's been six months yet, but I'm thinking we're getting close to it. The accessory building, I know the mayor wanted to see an update on what went, what we did. So I believe we did that in April. So again, it's something maybe we could look at seeing in October, if that's right.
I don't think anything has been approved since then.
We don't have any, there's just a couple, but we were going to look at it in six, we just review it in six months, just to see how we, how we're doing on it. And I think that was an April approval, so if we can look at it come, come October. Not put any pressure on you. Just remember, reminder that we did plan to do that. And that's all I got, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Ted. Robin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As far as the 50th anniversary for the high school, please know we're in the preliminary phases of that. If you can tentatively hold March 24th of 2018 on your calendars for a gala event for the 50th, that would be wonderful.
Thank you. Berwin?
Nothing, sir.
Lieutenant?
Nothing.
Chief?
No, sir.
Gina? Brian, welcome back.
Thank you. See everybody at the rodeo this weekend.
All right. Steve? Chad?
Just one comment. I didn't check with staff today for its status, but I believe the dual left-turn lanes at Hidden Valley and Hamner are complete, or very near complete, so those should be up and running to send folks eastbound from Hamner onto Hidden Valley. So hopefully it will help improve a little bit of traffic flow over there.
If I remember correctly, you said those, those other two would be done some, by sometime in December. Is that what?
The, the goal is this fiscal year, but it's really depending on how quickly we can get review from Caltrans. That's our biggest hurdle, is once we get approval from them, then we can just go out to bid and get construction. But Caltrans is the biggest hurdle, and we're, we're just in that beginning process with them.
All right, thank you.
Would you do a follow-up on, I think we should have had it done by now, on those signal arms, they're, that pseudo-type camera with the loose wires at First and Hamner and somewhere else?
There was actually.
Hidden Valley?
There was actually four. There was a Second Street, Hidden Valley, First Street.
Right.
And they've all been removed.
Okay. Good.
Everything.
Good job.
Literally the next day.
I forgot. How's our North Avenue coming?
It's progressing slow. We're trying to get the bid out for the trail fencing. And so I, not, I'm waiting to pull out the existing trail fencing until I know I have the contractor ready to go in and put it back. We have authorized Harding and Harper to do the median, that's going to have the new stop sign on California North. We've authorized the contractor to do the conduits that are going to go under the street into the medians to do that work. We're going to be installing the water meter and everything ourselves, and we're both be close to finishing the final design of the marquee sign with the previous person who did the design in the first place for the one that's on, on Hamner and Detroit. So we're trying to push them along, it's just different pieces, but we're, we're pushing.
To be gracious, would be October. Okay?
I'm going to push.
There you go. Our, October is, appreciate that. Cheryl?
I just quickly want to invite the public to visit the city booth at the Norco Fair over the Labor Day weekend, starting on August 31st, 31st. City staff will be available to answer questions. We have information, and any questions you may have, we're there to help, pick up brochures, and just learn about our programming and services that the city offers.
Thank you, Cheryl. Andy? Okay, well, thank you all, and have a good evening. We're adjourned.